As I said, good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Today is Thursday, May 12, 2022. The time is 7:01. This is the Village Board meeting for the Village of Willow Springs, and this meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk Charles, can we please call the roll?
Trusty Arra.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Micah. Pash.
Here.
Moon.
Here.
Carr. President Nettameyer.
Here. And that completes the roll. Thank you. We have a quorum. Can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will jump right into our first item of business, and that is disposition of previous minutes. In our board plan, we have meeting minutes from April 28. That was our last meeting. I have a motion to approve those.
Approve.
By trustee Kennedy, second by trustee Pash. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trusty Arra.
Hi.
Kennedy.
Hi.
Pash. Moon. Carr.
All eyes on those minutes are approved. Thank you. On to the report of the village administrator, Administrator Grace.
No report this evening.
Thank you, village clerk, Court Charles.
I have no report this evening.
All righty, thank you. Reports of officials, village engineer. Thank you, village attorney.
There is no report this evening.
Thank you, village treasurer.
No report.
All right, we're on to reports of standing committees then. First, we have Finance and Administration Committee. Trusty Arra.
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve ID 781, warrant 22-0-9 in May 12, 2022. Payroll and payroll expenses in the amount of $101,385.76. All fund expenses in the amount of $119,089.2 for a total of $220,474.78.
Thank you for that motion, trustee Arra. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Right, I'm sorry. Trustee Carr, thank you. Second by trustee Carr. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trusty Arra.
Hi.
Kennedy.
Hi.
Pash.
Hi.
Moon. Carr.
All eyes on those warrants are approved.
Thank you, Madam President.
All righty, thank you, trustee Arra. Public Safety Committee is trustee Kennedy, and we have a very special action item on his report this evening. I will turn it over to trustee Kennedy and Chief McCarthy to acknowledge awards for Corporal Watkins and Officer Kennedy.
We got a special award for like the two officers you have over there?
I do. I do. Was that them up there? Let me talk about it first.
Why don't you go to the podium, and that might go work.
Tonight, we're giving two words of praise to the county attorney. As long as we're safe, and we're being searched, we're safe.
It's a green light on?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Technology.
I'm giving two words for Corporal Watkins and police officer in the city. Just before I tell them what they did, just want to point out that anybody who's ever been in a residential fire is a very scary and dangerous thing. Now, as a young police officer, I was in the city, and saw a fire, and I naturally went running to it. Each second is a risk. What the heck am I doing here? I can't see a big thing. And then, I swore I would never do it again. And then six weeks later, but I had a difference. Guys, lead this to the fire department. It's the reason why I'm telling this. Bob and Tony, please come on up. In responding to the fire, and we want to talk about the address of people, and in responding to it, they learned that there was a very senior individual who was wheelchairaded, who was on the side. And they entered the building, which is out of its magnetic interest, and they not only brought the person out, they actually brought them out in her wheelchair all at the same time. So they saw this wheelchair while they actually made sure that this room was safe. So that's something that I want to hear that I will assist you with, but I'm very proud of you too. So congratulations and thank you.
All right, and that was very, very well done. Job well done, guys. Thank you again. Thank you, chief. And thank you, trustee Kennedy, for helping the award recognition. Trustee Kennedy, did you have anything else to report on?
I have nothing else to report on unless chief has something else.
But I just have a couple of very quick things to say. First of all, we started the process of hiring another full panel of district. That process is actually been underway, and tomorrow, we're actually having a police commission sit down discussing moving that forward. But we expect to be making that higher by the end of the month. And the second thing is that following up on a number of complaints that we received, we've set some federal agencies ongoing situation, and not getting anything satisfactory yet. But I've been on to be a little bit relentless.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do you have one more reason? I'm going to give you nine, four times plus you.
I think it's ten. Ten.
All right, does that include everything for public safety, gentlemen?
Yes, that concludes my report.
Thank you both very much. Then we'll move on to Municipal Building and Grounds Committee. Trustee Micah is not present, and I don't believe there was a report to read in at this time. So we'll go to Public Works Committee. Trustee Pash.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm proud to announce the proclamation to the public works. Pretty proud of these guys. I worked quite a bit with them, and we want to proclaim the week of May 15 through 21st the National Public Works Week, and it is titled, "Ready and Resilient." You know, this won't bore you because there's a lot of people behind the scenes that don't recognize, you know? The two biggest departments we have in this village are the police and public works. And that, and that's what makes us work. And with their support and our support of them, we get to honor all these departments. So I would like to read this to you, what it says on the plaque there for them. Public Works will focus on infrastructure facilities, emergency management, and services that are vital and important to sustainable and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the village of Willow Springs. These infrastructures, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are feverishly mandated first responders and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, and water treatment, and solid waste system, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and it is in the public interest of the citizens, civil leaders, and children in the village of Willow Springs to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2022, March 6th, oh boy, 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now, then, I would like to hand this over to Mayor Melissa Minmeyer to make this proclamation and sign this document.
Thank you.
And I'd like to give a round of applause to our public works. I wish you.
I'll go ahead and finish then. I'm Melissa Minmeyer, the president, to hereby designate the date of May 15 through May 21st, 2022. As National Public Works Week, I urge all citizens to join our representatives of the American Public Works Association, our organization, and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professional managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they made to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. That concludes the proclamation. Again, as trustee Pash said, we just can't thank our own public works department after all. And that concludes your report, trustee Moyer. All right, and thank you. We will move on to License and Franchise Committee. Trustee Moon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no news this moment, this time anyway, but just want to report that the one that arrived last week with the caveat saying he had to get a permit for his building and the case was, he hasn't had it. He has to come through the doors. I know I've been watching it pretty close, so I don't think it's a secret here. Anyway, he's got it. It's also there, so that's all I have to say, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, trustee. Building and zoning committee, trustee Carr.
Madam Mayor, this is a real report of the purpose issued during April. We issued the 30th permits, total discretion, $1,103,218, that resulted in permanent loss for the village of $1,384 hours. For the year, for January to April, 78 permits issued, $7,212,075 hours. Total construction value for permanent piece of $71,439. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, trustee Carr. Okay, on now to action items. And we have one action item this evening. To give a little bit of background, it is regarding the zoning variance for 8362 to 8366 Archer. If you recall, recently, the property was rezoned from R1 to R3 townhomes, and the variance sought was for, is for the development for ramp-style townhomes. The variance was applied for, notice was given, and there was a hearing held this past Monday. Comments were received from a few residents. After considering the facts and testimony, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approving the variance subject to six conditions. All of this is specified in the ordinance before us tonight. So to get started on any discussion, I'd like to first ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2022-010.
I'll make that motion. Sorry.
We have the motion by trustee Kennedy and the second by trustee Carr. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a few words on that instead. The townhomes and development, the footprint of that on that lot, there's some discrepancy in my mind about setbacks. But the fact of the matter is, is we're looking at already done this work with on a lot of not quite 15,000. It's putting a density of about 55% on that lot. And I believe there's a bit of high density. One of the, one of the things that was offered up, but not necessarily agreed to or discussed heavily yet, the zoning meaningful is that if that was changed to three townhomes, that would be more in line with about 41%. That's it. And would be, I believe, closer to what the normal setbacks would have to be. There's a couple of other items related to this from the variations in standards of this setback where it's being proposed on the drawing that we reviewed, shows that all the homes that are to the north of this development have a setback off the curve. This setback right here could be proposed in the western area. So it puts those, essentially puts the front of those townhomes above point for culture to purchase in comparison to homes. I bring this up only because I had tried to decipher what exactly was being built and how that applied to the, applied to the petition for variance. So I wanted to make everybody else aware that this is just more information before a decision finally gets made. And there are alternatives if you don't necessarily agree with the way this is laid out, to possibly go to three townhomes and then be closer to the footprint of what would normally be built there, depending on setbacks. So given the setbacks currently with an archer address, if somebody came in there and built something, the density would be just a hair under 35%. So that gives you a kind of a comparison. You know, it's, if you go by the address right now, which is an archer address, and all the normal setbacks, it would have been not quite 35%. Once again, if it's three townhomes, in comparison, it's 40, a bit over 41%. And then if you build four townhomes there on that property, the density becomes a bit different, which seems a bit high, as well as the setback off the mountain in comparison to the other homes on that block, which is part of the code of 98-2-3. The wording says, "Variation of granted will not alter the essential characteristics of the account." So, once again, it's a discretion. It's at least something to deal with.
Question I have is to get a quick answer. If it was on your one with three lots, it would be a deeper lot. Is that entrance going up on the archer avenue?
No, no. The way it's, the way it's set up right now, it's three townhomes that are facing Norton and are arranged north to south. Okay, so it, so if you went to three townhomes instead of four, you know, it'd be the same entrance up, no. It's just, it's just the way it's laid out. All I'm doing is offering up an option that wasn't readily discussed, but it was an option that was listed on the petition.
There any other discussion or concerns on?
Yeah, I have concern I have. Well, first of all, I noticed took a lot of work on everyone's part. Thank you to the zoning commission that went through this because I know they work back and forth trying to move things around for the builder to put this on this footprint. And I want residents to understand that, you know, there are variants we ask for. Every village in town has ordinances to keep everybody on board as far as builders and residents on what would be done. We don't, it doesn't necessarily mean any variance we give today is going to work somewhere. You know, I feel that, you know, the variance they asked for is fine with me. You know, Tom was right about the setbacks that go down Norton, but we do have areas of town, because it has an archer address, it is going to shift that property over and not line up with everybody down the block. But we have that. So I don't have a problem as a builder here. I just had a question. Please, if you could come on.
Sure.
Can you state your name for the court structure?
The group.
Thank you.
The question I have for you is I have some concerns from residents, and I want you to let me know if this is possible. If you can go ahead with this development, put a sidewalk down Norton on that side so that it shifts the kids down to the alley instead of, we can't move the crossing guard west because of where the lights are, and they cross there. So we're gonna, we're gonna do a little work for what we're gonna have to do with maybe parking over there. But at least if the parents have to park farther down the block, it pushes the kids farther. And if I look at this, pardon me? Right, because I look at this, and it'll fit in between drivers, you know what I mean? So it's not a lot. To me, it's not a lot of type. But if you're willing to do that, I would like to make a motion to add this. Six condition on the, your period.
So the seventh condition. So when we go ahead and do the roll call vote, are that a seventh condition? Is that an amendment?
And I have another question because I'm not sure how this goes, because when we approved this to go from B1 to R3, there was a caveat in there about approval of landscaping. So because that, or because of that approval, it doesn't need to be in this ordinance or, because it was separate? Or do we tie the two together? Do you understand? Remember that?
Certainly. The two will be tied together. There's no question about it.
Okay.
And the way that we wrote it is that it is at the discretion and approval of the village.
Right.
So the developer's gonna have to come in, put a landscaping plan before the village gets acceptable before they even begin construction.
Right. And all I was trying to do is not use what we put up.
Certainly. No, it still isn't in effect.
One question is, I don't know who this goes to, but at the end of the day, when it's all said and done, this archer address, was there a possibility that's going to be switched over to an old address?
Definitely.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. There'll be four separate addresses.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? The ordinance. Just want to add, thank you to everybody. There was a lot of time and thought put into this. There truly was, from the planning and zoning commission from our staff and from the board members and as well from the applicants. So thank you for that. It looks like with the motion, we are adding the seventh condition to do sidewalks along the, is that correct? As well as we're just clarifying in the fourth variant for the western side yard that the setback of the 28.5 feet is off the curve and not off of the end of the pavement. So with those changes and those clarifications, I will ask for a roll call vote for ordinance 2022-010.
Trusty Arra.
No.
Kennedy.
All right.
Pash.
Hi.
Moon. Carr.
All right, and that ordinance is approved. Thank you, everyone. That concludes action items. Is there any old business, any new business? Anyone wishing to speak for public comment?
Carol Meldes.
Thank you for your comment, Carol. I just want to add one point that I found was interesting because, as we mentioned, we did, there's a lot of thought. So in terms of density, when we talk about density, I was interested to find in our own code, the density for R1, which is the majority of the neighboring area around, if you look at our code, says that no building with its accessory building should occupy an excess of 60% or if it's a corner lot, 75%. So we're talking about an allowable by our code for R1, 60% to 70%. And in this case, as trustee Arra mentioned, with the density here, with the four townhomes, it comes to roughly about 65%. So I just found that interesting and thought I'd share it now as part of that discussion. But with that, is there any other public comment? Anybody else?
Early move, I'd like to just mention that last month, our last meeting, one of the people that spoke up to the driver at water and choose was concerned mainly about the post office where the drivers, drivers, they drive by to give you letters, man. I thought of the day that is, the post office planned, and they are checking out to get a contractor to level that, fill the holes and possibly put that up in. And there's only going to be one mailbox there, not two.
Thank you for that report. Okay, we have no, we first, I did a session this evening. I remove the president report. We already did the first proclamation under that with the public works. So next, we have to definitely recognize this proclamation that we do every year, which is recognizing National Police Week as the week of May 11 through 17. With all that is going on in police things today, Willow Springs reaffirms its support for our law enforcement and the law enforcement nationwide. I've asked trustee Kennedy if he would mind reading in the proclamation as public safety chair.
Okay, thank you. National Police Week of 2022, a proclamation to recognize National Police Week 2022 in the honor of the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in community across the United States, including dedicated members of the Willow Springs Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the name of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 619 new names and fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 472 officers killed in 2021 and 147 officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, 34th candlelight vigil. vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which is observed this year, May eleventh through the seventeenth, whereas May fifteenth designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of fallen officers and their families, and USO Act should be flown and have staffed. Therefore, it will be resolved that the village of Willow Springs will observe May eleventh through the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, as National Police Week, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And it's stated today and will be signed by the president. President Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Trusty Kennedy. And again, everybody with both of these proclamations, and declaring the proclamations is of course an important first step, but then what makes them really meaningful is to follow through on action. So if you get the opportunity to recognize our public works, and officials and our officers this next week especially, please do so. So thank you for that. And, and including, I guess, a couple more things I want to report on for some of happenings of the past couple of weeks. First of all, happy Father's Birthday to Chief Harp. He celebrated his birthday recently. This past week, Trusty Carr and I attended the legislative breakfast for Six Dishes candidates. And the reason I bring this up is because we got the opportunity to hear some of the candidates in their platform. But mostly the reason I want to share this event with you is because to bring awareness that there is an election coming, it's an unusual time for an election. So please remember to find out about the candidates, get out and vote. If you need help registering to vote, we are able to help you here at Willow Springs. Trusty Carr, do you want to add anything about the breakfast? Any points of interest?
No, it was very interesting. It was nice to hear from the candidates. They all did a pretty good job. It's a good morning.
It was, indeed. And Willow Springs was well represented there, so thank you for that. Um, and then one more event that took place this past week was the Quin County Forest Preserve had their board meeting on Tuesday at the Little Red Schoolhouse. So this was their first time meeting back in person since the pandemic. So the first time back in person since for about two years. They are taking this initiative now to have their meetings in person at actual forest preserve sites. It was their first site they chose, the Little Red Schoolhouse, and they invited us there to welcome them and welcome them to Willow Springs. And so it just, if anything, it reminds me, which I want to share with all of you, how fortunate we are to have a lot of these forestiers right in our backyard. Many of the people that were there were attending from farther off areas that don't have so much access to the forest reserves. So now, as the weather's getting nice, it just reminds us that we are fortunate and to really utilize those Little Red Schoolhouses are bullfrog and middle lane, our paths. It's all very much a, a nice thing for us to have and enjoy. Lastly, kind of connected, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So a lot of people find that utilizing this outdoor space helps with that. I just encourage you to recognize mental health awareness and, you know, a lot of people are, you don't always know what other people are going through. So be of support and if you need access to resources, we are very helpful. With all of that, that concludes the president's report. I will ask for a motion to adjourn. We have the motion by Trusty Moon and the second by Trusty Pash. All those in favor, sign if I can.
All right.
All right. Meeting adjourned at seven thirty.